Orunachal Pradesh. Madam President, on behalf of all the members of the Assembly and myself, I would like to express my sincere gratitude for your gracious presence and for your kind consent to address this August House and also inaugurate the photo exhibition set up to honour the unsung heroes of Orunachal Pradesh by RGU Commission by the Government of Orunachal Pradesh. I also extend a very warm welcome to our Honourable Governor, Lieutenant General, Retired K T Parnayakji, on the Chief Minister, Sri Pema Khanduji, on the Deputy Chief Minister, Sri Cholnamanji, on my Ministers, my colleague in the House, on the Deputy Speaker, Sri Tesam Pongteji and all the distinguished Member of this House. Friends, as you know, Orunachal Pradesh is an ethnic state inhabited by colourful tribal people of diverse culture and lifestyle. All of them have their own unique culture and traditions. They also have customary laws and a time-tested dispute resolution mechanism. The disputes in tribal societies are resolved by a system of administration of justice founded on customs and customary laws of each tribe. It is most gratifying to remember that the inhabitant of this tribal state have the spirit of democracy inherent in their traditional laws. There were unwritten rules for the administration of tribal villages. However, the customs and the traditions were almost compatible with the modern concept of jurisprudence. The tribal council in Nepha were functioning on the lines of the system evolved for the parliamentary democracy which is in vogue nowadays. The modern parliamentary democracy and the legislature in Orunachal Pradesh, however, owes its origin to the enactment of North East Frontier Agency Panchat Raj Regulation of 1967. On 29th December 1969, the Agency Council came into being as the apex advisory body with the Governor of Assam as its Chairman. The enactment of the Nepha Administration Supplementary Regulation of 1971 replaced the Agency Council by Pradesh Council which, with the five councilors and one of them from each district, those were the Arswal District, Kamensiyang, Loikkira and Subansari, entrusted with the work departments dealing with the developmental works. It became functional from 2nd October 1972. Soon thereafter, the popular demand for a legislative assembly was raised. With the promulgation of the North East Reorganisation Act 1971, Nepha was named as Orunachal Pradesh and in 1972, it got the status of Union Territory of India. This situation continued till 15th August 1975, when by the virtue of 37th Constitutional Amendment Act, the Pradesh Council was converted into a provisional legislative assembly of the Union Territory. It consisted of total 33 members, 30 elected directly by the people and three nominated by the Union Government. The members of the Pradesh Council became members of the provisional assembly and the councilors were made Ministers. As per norms, a Lieutenant Governor became head of the Union Territory. And yet another step towards fulfilling the democratic aspirations of the people of Orunachal Pradesh, the 55th Constitutional Amendment Act was passed on 20th February 1987, making it the 24th State of the Union of India with a full-fledged 60-member House, which is a unicameral legislative assembly and a popular government. Therefore, the evolution of parliamentary representative democracy in Orunachal was very closely intertwined with the journey of its attainment of statehood day. Madam President, initially, the Orunachal Assembly functioned from a small hall in Naharlaghun from which it shifted to this new complex on 19th November 2017, which is equipped with all the modern facilities to enable the Members and the Secretariat to function more efficiently and effectively. We are also striving to function as an E-Assembly and a paperless office in keeping with the national endeavour of digital media called by the Honourable Prime Minister. We are convinced that by embracing new technology, we will bridge the perceived gap between the legislative and the people and strengthen the parliamentary edifice. In October 2021, we have set up an Assembly Library to meet our legislators' knowledge and information need, which could in turn enrich the debate and the discussions in the House. You will be happy to know that this library will not only serve the need of our Melis and officials but it is open to our university, colleges and school students for their research purpose without any fees. Further, in keeping with our commitment for sustainable development and preservation of our forest and natural resources, we have a paper recycling plant within the Assembly Complex which will recycle whatever little paper waste is generated. We also have a museum dedicated to preserve the historical objects and spread the legacy of our political evolution, personalities who shaped the event and offered a peek into the unique socio-cultural life of the tribes of Orunachal Pradesh. Friends, today, the photo exhibition on unsung heroes, which is a tribute to those indigenous tribal people who were freedom fighters and martyrs, who contributed to India's freedom struggle, are little known. The inauguration of this exhibition by our Honourable President will be a befitting tribute to those unsung warriors. Madam President, your visit and your presence in our midst is a historic occasion for us. Your life is an inspiration saga of courage, fortitude and the dedication to save the people, especially the poor, marginalised and the downtrodden. We are truly honoured by your visit. Madam President, you will be happy to know that the Assembly of Orunachal Pradesh has all along been proactive in strengthening the democratic roots in the state, especially amongst the youth. As a part of our celebration to mark 75 years of our independence and 50 years of its identity as Orunachal, we have organised many outreach programmes, several events prior to the 26th November 2022, the Constitution Day, that is Samvidhan Divas. A few weeks preceding this day, essay competitions, quiz competitions, mock Parliament, Assembly Tour were organised for the school and college students to spread awareness about the working of our parliamentary institution, values, principles and shrine in our constitution. To conclude, may I once again take this opportunity to welcome you all and express my gratitude to our Honourable President, Sriram Dhrupadi Murmurji for her visit to this August House and who will be addressing us shortly. Thank you. Jai Hind, Jai Orunachal. May I now request Honourable President of India to kindly accept the memento and a coffee table book of Orunachal Pradesh Legislative Assembly. Now I request Honourable Governor to address the House.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Chief Minister, Honorable Deputy Chief Minister, Distinguished Members of the House. Let me begin by extending to Honourable President sincere gratitude on behalf of the people of myself of Pradesh for gracing the 37th Statehood Day celebrations which we had yesterday. Let me also express how grateful all the members of this August House are as they receive blessings and guidance from Mania Rastapadis. The presence of Her Excellency today is a matter of both inspiration and pride for the legislators of the state. Honourable President herself has been a successful public leader, beginning from grassroots and reaching the highest echelons of public service. Your Excellency, this visit of yours will provide phenomenal motivation to the young girls and women of the state, conveying to them the message that sincerity, service and hard work can make them true leaders and role models for the society. A few years back, this building was inaugurated by the Honourable President of India and dedicated to the state as a temple of democracy. Today, we shall have the opportunity and honour to listen to our President's direct address. This provides us both an occasion as well as inspiration to renew our pledge to uphold our shared democratic values and our own individual duties to the station. After 75 years of independence, it is reasonable to say that we can look back at our democratic journey with pride and satisfaction. We have achieved what we set out to become. We have promised ourselves and become not only a democracy but a global role model of a successful rule-based constitutional democracy with pluralistic society which underlines our mantra, unity in diversity. The Indian democracy is based on longstanding traditions of shared values. Although we are young as a nation, our value system goes back thousands of years and we are proud to have nurtured it, developed it and kept it in pace with it at time. Honourable Members, you all know that this House is also called Vidhan Saba as the Parliament is called Lok Saba. This dictum of Saba, references to such Sabas and Samittis discharging similar functions are found as early as in our Rig Vedas and Atharavada. Even then, we have followed established and effective democratic principles and what is termed as collective consciousness of the people. It would not be wrong to state that we are the modern children of the value-based democracy which existed since dawn of civilization. Let us also recall with pride that the essence of democratic values is perhaps best found in our tribal societies, which have maintained consultative decision-making in its purest form. In a way, the functioning of this House is an extension of that age-old system that has withstood the test of changing times and shown to the world that our love for democratic traditions is all about. We must make every attempt to preserve this rich heritage. We are committed to further blustering our ethnic identities and proudly showcase our distinguished culture to the world at large. We have taken up the project of documenting the cultural heritage of many tribes. We have also published indigenous language books, a feat that will go a long way towards preserving our indigenous heritage. We are taking steps to preserve our rich culture in the form of folklore, folk stories, traditional knowledge and generational awareness. Safeguarding the cultural heritage of the communities is an essential and necessary requirement for sustainable development. Dear Members, as we speak about progress and achievements, let us keep in mind that being the world's largest democracy with the greatest diversities comes with a great responsibility on our shoulders. There will be challenges but we should not despair against adversity. We should rather diligently carry on with our duties towards the motherland and our fellow citizens. Let us all remember, the Parliament and legislatures are cornerstones on which rests the edifice of our democratic policy. One of the basic objectives of a representative democracy is to see that governance is carried out in keeping in mind the mantra, people first. As you also do while serving the nation, we say nation first. In a parliamentary democracy, the legislature represents the sovereignty of the people. We have to be sensitive and responsive to the problems of the people and give voice to their grievances by raising them on the floor of the House. While doing so, we must rise above the narrow sectarian differences and instead build on our dreams of shared prosperity. As the saying goes, war pop leave or day, the voice of the people is truly the voice of God. We must act as the link between the people and the government. It has been a long and tedious journey for us since our state was conferred the status of a full-fledged state on 20th of February 1987. There have been many lows and highs along the way but we have held ourselves together as an entity all the way. May this abode of democracy be a place for you all to work with responsibility, transparency and accountability which is visible to the people. I am happy to note that the political leadership of the state is fully seized of the challenges and opportunities and is working sincerely to usher in a new era of peace and prosperity for its people. There is nothing which can stand in the way of Orunachal Pradesh provided there is will and determination on the part of its people and its leaders. You, ladies and gentlemen, the esteemed Members of this August Legislative Assembly, being the highest political forum, have played a pivotal role of by democratic discussions, debate, decision-making, to plan, preserve and promote the interests of the people of Orunachal Pradesh. I call upon Orunachal Pradesh Legislative Assembly to continue to maintain the highest standards of democratic practice and dedicate yourself completely to the well-fitted leadership. The state of Orunachal has crossed a long journey in comparatively short period of time. Today's Orunachal Pradesh stands between the legacy of an ancient civilization and the promising horizons of a boundless future. May Orunachal Pradesh emerge as a land of grace and beauty, a shining jewel amongst the beautiful states that make up our great and glorious country. My highest regards once again to Honourable President for blessing our land of the rising sun through the precincts of this August House. Thank you. Jai Hind, Jai Orunachal.
Now, may I request Honourable President of India to address this August House. Ma'am, please.
Orunachur Pradesh ke Vidhan Shoba ke Visesh Shatrah ke Afshar par upastit Orunachur Pradesh ke Rajapal, Lieutenant General Parnayakji, Vidhan Shoba Adhyakshri Pasang Darji Sonaji, Mukhyamantri Sri Pema Khanduji, Vidhan Shoba ke sohi Sadashyagan, Gommanya Atithio, Debiyo or Sojano. Sobhi ko mera namaskar. Khupsurat Raja, Orunachur Pradesh ke is Lak Tantra ke mandir mein, aaj aap sabke sambodhit karte hueye mujhe hardik prasanta ho regiye. Mujhe ye Afshar pradan karni ke liye, main manya adhyaksh mahatoy, manya mukhyamantri ji aur sobhi manya sadashyong ko dhannabat deti hai. Ye dekh kar mujhe prasanta hoti hai ki vikash ka shurya Orunachur Pradesh ko prokasit kar raha hai. Orunachur Pradesh aaj Bharat ki pragati ki dhara ka mahatopuno shroti hai. Ye raja aur yahan ke sarad ta tha nishthavan, niwasi, desh ki arthik aur samajik pragati mein apna omulaj yogdan de raha hai. Orunachur Pradesh ke vikash ko dekh kar purvatar khetro ki vikash dharak nahi urja dena vale Bharat Ratna, shrode or tod bihari bhaiji ka sahachi smaran hoti hai. Jab or todji pradhamantrhi the, toh unhone purvatar khetro ke sumagro vikash se tu uttar purvi khetro vikash mantraai ghaton kiye the. Apne uske baad Orunachur Pradesh sahit samast purvatar khetro ke vikash ko shakti mile. Orunachur Pradesh mein Stafith Lak Tantra ke is mandir mein, is raja ki unnoti ka mark prasast karni vale or todji ki smruti ko main saadar naman karte hoon. Purvatar khetro ke vikash se tu or todji ke shopno ko bhartman kendra sarkar ne or odhik vyapok aur prohabhi shuru pradan kiye hai. Iske liye main kendra sarkar ki sarhana karte hoon. Mujhe ye jankar bahut khushi hoti hai ki Orunachur Pradesh ki vidhan shoba ne is pradesh ki pragati ko shuru pradan karni vale sarbachchon moch ke rup mein apni mahatopuno bhumi ka niwai hai. Iske liye main is shodan ke bhartman aur purv sadashyong ko sarhana karte hoon. Manya sadashyong. Orunachur Pradesh mein adhuni lak tantra ki neev 1967 mein Nepha Panchat Raj Regulation ke saath gram nos tor par shuru hi. Iske baad ke vikash krom mein 15 August 1975 ko Pradesh Council ko kendra saasit Pradesh ki vidhan shoba mein parivartan kar diya gaya hai. Ye bahuti horse ka viso hai ki us pahili vidhan shoba mein Shivo Kaiji ko is shodan ki pahili mohila sadashyog ke rup mein namankit kiya gaya tha. Prarum se is vidhan shoba mein 33 sadashat hai jin ki sankhya 20 February 1987 ko Orunachur Pradesh ko purn raja ka darja milne par badkar shixti hogi. Ye chhoti se shuruat se bhartman tok is vidhan shoba ne ek lamba sofar tayi kiya hai. Iske liye bhi main sobhi purvo aur bhartman sadashyong ko bahut bahut badiye deti hai. Aaj main viseshkar PK Tungna ji ji aur Toedar Tang ji, Tomo Riwa ji, Soben Tayeng ji aur Bangphaa Lobang ji ko namon karna chahe huenge jinhon ne pratham vidhan shoba aur kalantar ke vidhan shobhaon ke ghaton mein apni mahatopuno bhumi ka niwai hai. Manya sadashyogon, Orunachur Pradesh aur moriya da, sangshodiyopraani ki pehchan hai. Hame ye sunischit karna chahiye ki baad vi baad ki samagri aur gunobhatta uchotom storki ho. Saathi, hame vikash aur jonakalnaan ke mudho por aam sohamati banane ki jorurat hai. Mujhe ye jankar khushi hui hai ki is vidhan shoba mein sangshodiyolak tantr ke uchoton manoko ko banaya rakhga gaya hai. Sastlak Tantrantak ki patri sarbachchon man banaya rakhne ke liye main sobhi sadashyong ko badiye deti hai. Orunachur Pradesh vidhan shoba ne Digital India Karayakram ke thoth E vidhan ke karya nayan ke saath paperless digital jatra shuru ki hai. Ye onukurni hai. Ye prasanta ki baat hai ki koi raja ne is paperless model ka adhyan karen ne aur use apnane ke prayas kiye hai. Rajya Sarkar ne vas 2022 ko Year of E-Governance ghosid kiya aur koi E-Governance parijojana shuru ki, jo na kebal prasasanik sudar ki disham me modat karige balki aam logon ki jivan ko aasan banane me bhi yogdan deenge. Ye kathan sarbatasatya hai ki jhyan badhne se hi badta hai. Mujhe ye jankar prasanta hui hai ki is vidhan shoba ke pustokala ke upoyok ki subidha, vidhayakon aur adhikaryon ke saath-saat school, college aur vissho vidalay ke chhatra ke liye nishruk upalab hai. Mujhe ye bhi jhant huwa hai ki is vidhan shoba ke shoba mein no year assembly pahal ki thoth samoy-samoy par school aur college ke viddathion ko vidhai karayavahi se avagat karane ke liye bulaya jata hai. Mujhe viswase hai ki aaj ki jawapiti is subidhaon ka laav utha kar desh aur pradesh ki pragati mein apna yogdan deenge. Manya sadashyogon, aaj ke yug mein pariyavon, praduson aur jodvayu parivartan tok vikot samusha hai. Jinka samadhan hame shigrat se khajna hai. Orunachur Pradesh jaise bhogodik rup se sambhedonsil raja ke liye ye muddevi aur mahatopuno ho jata hai. Mujhe ye jankar prasanta hoti hai ki is raja ke niiti nirmataon ne is visai por dhyan rakhha hai. Orunachur Pradesh ne Pakke declaration ke madham se jodvayu parivartan ke liye prati badhotat dikhane ka songkod piya hai. Mujhe aasa hai ki anya raja bhi isse prana lete huey is model ki ko apnayenge aur unko bhi disham milega. Mujhe ye jankar prasanta hui hai ki is vidhan shoba ne vigat varso mein koi mahatopuno vidhayak pas kiye hai. Jin mein pramukhe Orunachur Pradesh Panchat Raja Vidhayak, Raja Mohila Ayak Vidhayak, Pradesh Lokseva Adhikar Vidhayak, Karmachari Choyon Board Vidhayak, Lokayuk Vidhayak aur Ease of Doing Business Deal. Manya sadashyogon. Aap sab jante hai ki Orunachur ki is dhati par shadion se so saason aur grass roots democracy ki ek jivanth pranali vidyoman hai. Buliyang, Kewang, Mochuk J C, Lak Tantrik Sasthai logon ki ichha aur janushakti ki obibhakti se apna odhikar prapt karte thi. Adivasi sanskriti apne somoho ki akankhao ko pura karni mein nispost paridursi aur jobaavde ban kar sochi lak tantr aur so saason se mul shantit ko atmosat kiye hai. Adhuni lak tantrik prokreya mein bhi Orunachur Pradesh ki janta ne badchad kar bhag liya hai jo unki rajnitik chetna aur lak tantr mein aasta ko ujagar karta hai. Janta ko apni pratinihtiyon se apekha hoti hai. O raja ke vikash aur unke kallan ke liye shodep prayasrat rehenge. Aap sab manya sadashyong, raja ke sarbachchon niiti nirmata hai aur a raja ke vikash mein aapki mahatopuno bhumi ka hai. Orunachur Pradesh ki vidhan shoba sahit sobhi raja ki vidhan shobhaon totha jon pratinihtiyon ki anyo sasthaon mein mohilao ki bhagidhari badhne jaye. Mera manna hai ki humare desh ke sumagro aur sumaviki vikash ke liye haar karya khetra mein mohilao ki bhagidhari or odhik honi chahiye. Bharat ne ajati ke 75 varsh puri karke amrutkal mein pravas liya hai. Amrutkal ka ye 25 varsh ka kal khant vikshit Bharat ke nirman ye kal khant mein aapke nirantar prayas Orunachur Pradesh ko desh ke shobse vikshit rajo mein se ek bana sakte hai aur Bharat ko bhi vissho ke agrim rastra mein sthan dilaa sakte hai. Manya sadashyogon. Orunachur Pradesh Bharat ka ek mahatopuno hissa hai aur Bharat ki artist polisi mein ek pramukhi dhara bhi hai. Utterpurva khetro lombi samoy se shadak, rail aur hawaay sampaar ki subidhaon ke abhaap ke karun arthik vikash ke laav se banchit raha tha. Lekin kendra ki bhartman sarkar ne uttar purvo mein connectivity aur development ko kendra mein rakhha hai. Aaj ye dekh kar khushi hoti hai ki Orunachur Pradesh mein vikash ko ghati dena ke liye kendra sarkar ki orse deja raha hai. Samarthon mein spost badlav aaya hai. Bharpur sanskritik samsadhon aur gunobhatta puno manop samsadhon ke bolpar Orunachur Pradesh mein ek attractive investment destination totha vyapar aur vyavasay ka kendra banne ki puri chavata hai. Mujhe ye jankar prasanta hoti hai ki raja ke krisi aur sambodh khetro mein ulakniyavikash huwa hai jo hal ke varso mein raashtyo osav se kahi odhik hai. Orunachur Pradesh mein desh ke natural fruit bowl ke rup mein ubhrtir uparni ki chavata hai. Ye raja khasi, mundharin, shantre aur kiwi utpadan mein pahle sthan phar hai. This country is the first country to have a farm, a farm and a high level of development. It is a big development in the field of crops. It is a fact that the projects of infrastructure are finished or are planned to help the development of the country in the arts and arts. I have heard that the state government spent nearly thirty percent of its budget on building assets in the country. It is a very happy fact that after the construction of the power supply Arunachal Pradesh has become a powerful country. All the members, Arunachal Pradesh's social media, culture and spirituality are a part of this country in India. Today, the interest of the country and the people here is seen from this perspective. For this, we should make sure that the villagers are connected to the growth of the country. We need to tell the people of this country about the protection of the rich, prosperous social media and the development of the people. The people of Arunachal Pradesh, in their own way, are supporting the social media and the people's development. It is a significant role in the development of the community. In the end, I wish all the people of Arunachal Pradesh a good luck in the future. Today, you all are here with your country's new year. Today, the festival of the festival is here. I thank you for this. Jai Hind, Jai Arunachal.
Now, the Honorable Deputy Speaker may propose the word of gratitude.
President of India, Sir Muthi Durbuddi Munmuji, Honorable Governor of Arunachal Pradesh, Lieutenant General Retired, Sir Kavya Chivikram Paranakji, Honorable Speaker, Sir P D Sonaji, Honorable Chief Ministers, Sir Pema Khanji, Honorable Deputy Chief Ministers, Sir Chonamendi, Council of Ministers and Honorable Members of this Assembly. Good morning to you all. It is indeed a great honour and privilege for me to propose the word of thanks on this memorable occasion and thank the Honorable President of India, Sir Muthi Durbuddi Munmuji, for her kind address to the members, Honorable Members in this hallowed hall of the Arunachal Pradesh Assembly. Madam President, your gracious presence and address to us will certainly be each in our memory forever. Your address has certainly encouraged and inspired us to dedicate ourselves to strengthen our parliamentary system of governments and democracy. We can legitimately take pride in being the largest democracy in the world. However, democracy is neither new or aligned to us. From time immemorial, our way of life and institution have been democratic. Ancient literature like in the Rig Veda, there is mention of decisions like Saba and Samiti existing during this period who took collective decision almost in the same manner like in the legislative of two days. We have elected, set up right from Parliament down to the Punjab level. The common citizen through periodic election exercised his sovereignty power. Madam President, as you had very rightly observed and I quote, "It is great success of our democracy that the common voters living in remote areas feels that he or she has a major role in deciding who would govern the country or a state and how they would do it", unquote. Madam President, your insightful address and observation will serve to guide us in our future endeavors. We are very grateful to you for sparing your very precious time to address us all in this August House which reflects the hopes and aspirations of the residents of Arunachal Pradesh and guides their destiny. Friends, we are very grateful to our Honorable Governor of Arunachal Pradesh, Lieutenant General Retired, Sir Kety Paranakji for his benign presence and his kind address on this memorable occasion. I am sure we have all greatly benefited from your persuasive thought and ideas which you have shared with us. I would also like to thank Honorable Chief Minister, Sir Pema Khanji and Deputy Chief Minister, Sir Chonamendi, all the Honorable Council of Ministers and Honorable Members of Arunachal Pradesh Legislative Assembly for their gracious presence on this occasion. I would like to congratulate and thank our Honorable Speaker, Sir P D Sonaji for his welcome address and also his guidance in organizing today's event. I thank the members of the Majors for elaborately covering this momentous visit of the Honorable President to our beautiful state. We are also thankful to all the officials of Arunachal Pradesh Legislative Assembly, Secretary Department of Arunachal Pradesh Government for their cooperation and hard work that they have put in for this function. Thank you all for your presence here today and making the occasion a great grand success. Thank you. Thank. Jai Hind, Jai Arunachal.
Now, I request all the Honorable Members to proceed for the group photograph with Honorable President at the main entrance of the Assembly Hall before proceeding for inauguration of exhibition.